Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinis?
Here.
Trustee Malani?
Here.
Trustee Lawrence?
Here.
Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Leafblad?
Here.
Mayor Dadd?
Here. Pledge allegiance.
Stand for the pledge, please.
You start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Malani? I move to go into executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performances or dismissal of specific village employees.
Second.
Before we call the roll, do we want to let the... there's a couple people who signed in to make comments to the board. Do you want to let them go first? Or executive session is... fine. Mr. Healy, you have a schedule issue, correct? Call the roll, please. Go into executive session.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinis?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Trustee Lawrence? No.
Trustee Lawler?
No.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Mayor Dadd? At this time, it asks for executive session.
Trustee Healy. Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Manani.
Here.
Trustee Lawrence.
Here.
Trustee Lawler.
Here.
Trustee Leeflat.
Here.
And the time is 6:55. At this time, we will proceed to the next, to Section C on the agenda, or I'm sorry, number three on the agenda. Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment. Before we proceed, I'd like to give a preamble. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks on village board members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, any discussion of matters that are currently under legal review will not be permitted.
Carol McGree.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. And before I start, I just want to say good luck. I know it's going to be an interesting four years. I ran as a trustee. I lost. But I still wish you all the best because that's what's best for Orland Park. So I just wanted to say good luck and congratulations. But with that, even though I say congratulations, I still have questions. And I just, I know part of the platform that you ran on was transparency, stability, and fiscal responsibility, and some other things. And those are great tenants, incredible tenants to run on. But then I found out about a special board meeting through just happenstance, through a next-door posting. There was nothing that came out from the village. It was, I know it was done within 48 hours because people were posting online who were supporting you all that it was out there, but I felt like, wow, that's kind of odd, like, to do that so quickly. And then it was said that there would be two items on the agenda. It would be the mayor pro tem, kind of understood that one, and the triangle. Wasn't exactly sure what that would be, but I'm like, okay. So then I went into the agenda and saw that the village manager was on there, and I was surprised. So the reason I bring this up is because transparency, stability, and fiscal responsibility, those are your tenants. And my understanding is you plan to reinstate George, I hope I don't butcher his name, Kazwara, as the village manager. And so when I think about, you ran about the audits being delayed, you ran about there being budget issues, all these personnel issues that you all talked about publicly. Ray Hanania wrote about it, like, it was pretty public knowledge. He was the village manager during that time. So I question if this was your platform that you ran on, the thought process or the business process to reinstate the man that was accountable for all the things that you were running against. So that's a statement, kind of a question as well. I was, I worked in corporate America. I worked with HR departments. I know one of the first questions I would ask, and I don't know if it's legally something that could be asked, is would you rehire George as an employee? Typically, when someone self-selects out, the HR department will say whether they can be rehired or not. And so that would be my first question is, what did the HR department say when he left? And I know that his contract wasn't renewed. He quit before that. I understand that. But I'm struggling with the business process that you're going through to either, I'm struggling trying to think about, were the things that you were saying during the campaign real? Or was George really not a good village manager? I can't be the one to say that. I would have to defer to the previous administration, the previous board. And so I'm just raising that as a concern. And civility, there's a lot out on social media today on this topic, a lot of people jumping in. And to be honest, Mayor, I know they weren't your sanctioned people, but there were people, all they were doing is, I hate Keith Pecow, I hate Keith Pecow, I hate Keith Pecow.
Carol, we're past three minutes. If you could wrap up, please.
You bet. So all I'm asking is that you please consider rethinking your choice of George. I have nothing against the man. I don't know him. But from making a sound business decision, I think you have to look at the statements you made during your campaign and think about the actions you would be taking now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Solak.
Oh, wait. We don't have any.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no. Well, I have, hang on for one. Joe, do you want to let him go first, or do you want to?
Thank you.
Make sure you state your name, sir.
Sure. I'm Darrell Barnum. I'm a professor emeritus of management at UIC Business School, and I also have an appointment in the School of Public Administration. Given the urgency of the ensuring stable leadership and uninterrupted village operations, I believe it's both practical and responsible to appoint a qualified village manager now rather than delaying it for a long search. The normal hiring process makes sense under ordinary circumstances, but after a hard-fought election with critical decisions ahead, we need someone now who can step into the job immediately and restore professional management. Now, I don't know if we're talking about George or not, but if we are, George is already familiar with our operations, has a proven track record, and can provide continuity and stability we need right now. Let's be honest about the context. The former mayor had a track record of poor management, was highly opinionated, and often made questionable personnel decisions. I strongly suspect that any disciplinary action taken against George reflected more on the former mayor's flaws than on George's performance. So reinstating George would not only correct that wrong, it would send a strong signal that we're returning to professionalism, fairness, competence, and transparency. Thank you.
Mr. Solak.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Solak. I live at 9722 154th Street in Orland Park, Illinois. Good evening. When I went to your swearing-in ceremony, I tried to get into the boardroom. I was told that only families, and candidates, and employees were admitted. I noticed that George, I'm not even going to try to pronounce his last name, was in the room and standing in the village employee section. I thought it was odd, because I know he is not related to anyone on the board, and he's not an employee. But tonight, it all becomes clear. By his presence in the boardroom at that time, it gave the appearance that his position as village manager was predetermined as a done deal. What happened to your promise of transparency? Why was the open position of village manager not publicly advertised to attract other candidates? According to our former government, the village manager has the most power. Also, the village manager should be politically neutral. The fact that he worked on your campaign should disqualify him from the position. This is probably the most important vote that the trustees will cast in the next four years, in the next four years. Have the new trustees formally vetted the candidate? Has anyone seen his contract? Tonight, you are essentially voting for an individual whose terms of employment are unknown. That is not good government. The residents deserve better. So what's the hurry to appoint a new village manager? As you would say, let the process play out. It is only fair to the residents to find the most competent candidate. Besides the word "process," there are two other words that begin with the letter P. They are payroll, or payback, and patronage. If the board approves George as the village manager, we will witness the return of Chicago politics to our village. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll proceed to the...
Excuse me. Ma'am, is there anyone else in the audience you'd like to address the board?
All right. We'll proceed to number four, items for separate action. Appointment of village manager.
I move to...
But John, it has to be recognized.
Trustee Lawler.
Yes, I might make a motion.
Proceed.
I move to appoint George Kazwara as village manager of the village of Orland Park effective immediately at an annual-based salary of $207,000, and to authorize the village president, pending on the village attorney's review, to execute a one-year employment agreement on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the other board members?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I just wanted to say a few words. The village managers, the chief administrator responsible for day-to-day operations, budget management, and policy implementation. Some would say and argue that the village manager actually has more control over the village than the actual mayor or board dealing with the day-to-day. The appointment of a village manager is one of the most important and certainly one of the most serious votes a trustee can make. The process should be, as with any other position in our village, is to be posted and to seek the best qualified candidate to lead our great village and our employees. Heck, even a seasonal employee working at the pool has more oversight than we're getting in this appointment. In my opinion, George Kazwara inserted himself into a political campaign in order to return to a position he resigned from. This is certainly not somebody I could vote yes to hire back. Village managers adhere to ICMA Code of Ethics. If memory serves me correct, it's within his own contract that he had signed previously with the village, and I think it was pretty much in all of our contracts with village managers. They have a code of ethics, and there's 12 tenants within that code. I believe George personally had violated several of those. In particular, tenant seven states refrain from all political... ...
Incredible tenants to run on. But then I found out about a special board meeting through just happenstance, through a next-door posting. There was nothing that came out from the village. It was, I know it was done within 48 hours because people were posting online who were supporting you all that it was out there, but I felt like, wow, that's kind of odd, like, to do that so quickly. And then it was said that there would be two items on the agenda. It would be the mayor pro tem, kind of understood that one, and the triangle. Wasn't exactly sure what that would be, but I'm like, okay. So then I went into the agenda and saw that the village manager was on there, and I was surprised. So the reason I bring this up is because transparency, civility, and fiscal responsibility, those are your tenants. And my understanding is you plan to reinstate George, I hope I don't butcher his name, Kazwara, as the village manager. And so when I think about, you ran about the audits being delayed, you ran about there being budget issues, all these personnel issues that you all talked about publicly, Ray Hanania wrote about it, like, it was pretty public knowledge. He was the village manager during that time, so I question if this was your platform that you ran on, the thought process or the business process to reinstate the man that was accountable for all the things that you were running against. So that's a statement, kind of a question as well. I was, I worked in corporate America, I worked with HR departments. I know one of the first questions I would ask, and I don't know if it's legally something that could be asked, is would you rehire George as an employee? Typically, when someone self-selects out, the HR department will say whether they can be rehired or not. And so that would be my first question is, what did the HR department say when he left? And I know that his contract wasn't renewed, he quit before that, I understand that. But I'm struggling with the business process that you're going through to either, either, I'm struggling trying to think about, were the things that you were saying during the campaign real, or was George really not a good village manager? I can't be the one to say that. I would have to defer to the previous administration, the previous board. And so I'm just raising that as a concern. And civility, there's a lot out on social media today on this topic, a lot of people jumping in. And to be honest, Mayor, I know they weren't your sanctioned people, but there were people, all they were doing is, I hate Keith P. Cow, I hate Keith P. Cow, I hate Keith P. Cow.
Carol, we're past three minutes, if you could wrap up, please.
You bet. So all I'm asking is that you please consider rethinking your choice of George. I have nothing against the man, I don't know him, but from making a sound business decision, I think you have to look at the statements you made during your campaign and think about the actions you would be taking now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Solak? Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, it, well, I have, I have, hang on for one. Joe, do you want to let him go first, or you want to?
Thank you.
Make sure you state your name, sir.
Sure. I'm Darryl Barnum. I'm a professor emeritus of management at UIC Business School. And I also have an appointment in the School of Public Administration. Given the urgency of the ensuring stable leadership and uninterrupted village operations, I believe it's both practical and responsible to appoint a qualified village manager now, rather than delaying it for a long search. The normal hiring process makes sense under ordinary circumstances, but after a hard-fought election with critical decisions ahead, we need someone now who can step into the job immediately and restore professional management. Now, I don't know if we're talking about George or not, but if we are, George is already familiar with our operations, has a proven track record, and can provide continuity and stability we need right now. Let's be honest about the context. The former mayor had a track record of poor management, was highly opinionated, and often made questionable personnel decisions. I strongly suspect that any disciplinary action taken against George reflected more on the former mayor's flaws than on George's performance. So reinstating George would not only correct that wrong, it would send a strong signal that we're returning to professionalism, fairness, competence, and transparency. Thank you.
Mr. Solak?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Solak. I live at 9722 154th Street in Orland Park, Illinois. Good evening. When I went to your swearing-in ceremony, I tried to get into the boardroom. I was told that only families and candidates and employees were admitted. I noticed that George, I'm not even going to try to pronounce his last name, was in the room and standing in the village employee section. I thought it was odd, because I know he is not related to anyone on the board, and he's not an employee. But tonight, it all becomes clearer. By his presence in the boardroom at that time, it gave the appearance that his position as village manager was predetermined as a done deal. What happened to your promise of transparency? Why was the open position of village manager not publicly advertised to attract other candidates? According to our former government, the village manager has the most power. Also, the village manager should be politically neutral. The fact that he worked on your campaign should disqualify him from the position. This is probably the most important vote that the trustees will cast in the next four years, in the next four years. Have, have the new trustees formally vetted the candidate? Has anyone seen his contract? Tonight, you are essentially voting for an individual whose terms of employment are unknown. That is not good government. The residents deserve better. So what's the hurry to appoint a new village manager? As you would say, let the process play out. It is only fair to the residents to find the most competent candidate. Besides the word "process," there are two other words that begin with the letter P. They are payroll and pay, or payback and patronage. If the board approves George as the village manager, we will witness the return of Chicago politics to our village. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll proceed to the-
Excuse me. Ma'am, is there anyone else in the audience you'd like to address the board?
We'll proceed to number four, items for separate action, appointment of village manager.
I move to-
But John, it has to be recognized.
Trustee Lawler?
Yes, I might make a motion. I move to appoint George Kazawara as village manager of the village of Orland Park, effective immediately, at an annual-based salary of $207,000, and to authorize the village president, pending on the village attorney's review, to execute a one-year employment agreement on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Are there any comments from the other board members?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I just wanted to say a few words. The village managers, the chief administrator, responsible for day-to-day operations, budget management, and policy implementation. Some would say and argue that the village manager actually has more control over the village than the actual mayor or board dealing with the day-to-day. The appointment of a village manager is one of the most important and certainly, certainly one of the most serious votes a trustee can make. The process should be, as with any other position in our village, is to be posted and to seek the best qualified candidate to lead our great village and our employees. Heck, even a seasonal employee working at the pool has more oversight than we're getting in this appointment. In my opinion, George Kazwara inserted himself into a political campaign in order to return to a position he resigned from. This is certainly not somebody I could vote yes to hire back. Village managers adhere to ICMA Code of Ethics. If memory serves me correct, it's within his own contract that he had signed previously with the village, and I think it was pretty much in all of our contracts with village managers. They have a code of ethics, and there's 12 tenants within that code. I believe George personally had violated several of those. In particular, tenant seven states refrain from all political activity which undermines public confidence in professional administrators. Members should not be involved in political activities related to running for office or engage in political activities. And again, this was in his prior contract, I'm sure it's going to be in the current. I could go into all the reasons why I have issues with George's ability as village manager. I would encourage anybody that's interested in FOIAing the village and get a copy of his personnel records, and you could judge for yourself. I would propose that we table this appointment and conduct an open and transparent process for our next village manager. Right now, the village is in very capable hands with Jim Colada. It's been my opinion, and I think that of my fellow board members. I think the residents and the employees of our village deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
As I mentioned earlier, I mean, this came quite a bit of a surprise this weekend when you called me to, to let me know about this, considering the board had never met and had a single discussion on this topic, and is a very important topic. You know, civility and transparency, Carol, you touched on that. Last-minute board meetings and hurrying them on a Monday night, missing dinner, not very transparent. And that's not the way we do it here anymore. We don't have one-on-one private discussions on the phone. We have meetings, we get into a conference room, and with advice and consent of the board, we make informed decisions. And that's what I'd like to see happen here. There was not a job posting, there was no interview process. We haven't decided as a whole who would be the best to serve the entire board, as well as the residents of Orland Park. No contract, well, we now have a contract terms and salary decision. An hour ago, I had no idea what they were. Nothing. I wish our HR director was here, because I'd be curious to see the look on her face as we're talking about this as well. The reason we had to go in executive session, and sorry that we had to make you wait, we had to go have our discussions this evening, because we haven't talked about this previously. And probably it wasn't a conversation you would have wanted to hear anyway, because you might change your opinion. So, you know, we're probably going to vote on this, and it's probably not going to go the way that I would like to see, but we'll all do the best we can to still work for Orland Park, no matter what happens for this decision. Just for the sake, I will entertain a motion to table this, or I will make a motion to table this appointment.
Is there a second to that motion? All right, call the roll on a motion to table. Motion, call the roll on a motion to table.
Trustee Healy is absent. Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
No.
Trustee Lawler?
No.
Trustee Leaflet?
No.
Mayor Dodge?
No. I tried. Motion fails. Before we go, call the main motion. Are there any other comments from the board? Trustee Lawler?
I would like to make a motion. I move to-
The motion's already on the floor, we're good. Any other comments? All right. Call the roll for the main motion. Just so we're clear, Trustee Lawler, will you repeat the motion? Just so everyone's clear what we're doing.
Yes. I move to appoint George Kazawara as village manager of the village of Orland Park, effective immediately, at an annual-based salary of $207,000, and to authorize the village president, pending the village attorney's review, to execute a one-year employment agreement on behalf of the board.
That's the motion. Will the clerk call the roll for that motion?
Trustee Healy is absent. Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
No.
Trustee Lawrence?
Yes.
Trustee Lawler?
Yes.
Trustee Leaflet?
Yes.
Mayor Dodge?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll proceed to item 4B, appointment of president pro tem for the village of Orland Park.
I'll entertain a motion. I, excuse me, I appoint Joanna Leaflet as mayor pro tem?
I would like to move to approve the village president's appointment of Joanna Leaflet as the village president pro tem.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Trustee Healy is absent. Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leaflet?
Aye.
And Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
We'll proceed to the item for discussion, number five, downtown Orland Park discussion.
Just a couple of comments before we, we get this going. As we, the new trustees were ramping up significance of the development, the long relationship with, with Edwards Realty, we wanted to have a discussion just to kind of, quite frankly, catch up. And so the way we wanted to do this was in a public meeting, so that everyone heard and saw the, the comments. So staff has been gracious enough to assemble, thank you, so that we can kind of go through this in an open setting with, with the new board. So with that, Jim, I don't know how you want to kick this off, or?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff has prepared, prepared this presentation. We also have several individuals present that can answer any questions you may have. Please feel free to stop the presentation whenever you feel like there might be a need for clarification or questions.
Jim, before, before we go, just a quick note, both Edward and Ramsey, Nassan have joined us, so we may, if you don't mind, we may ask a question or two in your direction. Thanks, Jim.
Great. Steve and Ed, could you please start the presentation?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and other members of the village board. We'll start by giving a brief history of where we are with the downtown Orland Park project. Starting in 2018, the village went through an RFP process to select the master developer for the balance of the, of the developable land in the Main Street Triangle TIF district. At that time, there were two finalists, Structured Development and Edwards Realty. And in December of 2018, the village board approved working with Structured Development. Staff work diligently with Structured, but negotiations stalled, and Structured determined that the project was not feasible, given the market conditions created by the COVID-19 pandemic. From there, in October of 2020, the parties opted to part ways, and leaving the village free to explore the other finalist proposals, and start discussing that with Edwards Realty. Immediately thereafter, the village re-engaged Edwards to explore if the current market would make the village board vision viable or feasible. In March of 2021, the village board passed a memorandum of understanding and a consulting agreement with Edwards Realty to collaboratively design a redevelopment plan for the remaining 9.15 acres in the Main Street Triangle. That concept plan is displayed on the screen now, and included for the parcels north of 142nd Street, parcel A and parcel B, would be, parcel A, a six-story mixed-use building with a first-floor commercial space of 34,000 square feet, second-floor office space, a 5,000-square-foot rooftop restaurant, and 5,000-square-foot patio. Parcel B would be a five-story mixed-use building with commercial, with 29,000 square feet of commercial, with the second through fifth floors being residential with approximately 80 units. In addition to that, what is now Jefferson Street would be a shared pedestrian-only, pedestrian-only walkway that would be used for, to activate the space with outdoor seating and other programmed events. Parcel C, which is currently what was the Crescent Park parcel, would be a three-story, three-story civic building with 30,000, approximately 30,000 square feet per floor, that would include office space, as well as auditorium space and entertainment space. Parcel H is an outbuilding to, to, proposed two outbuildings near La Grange Road, that would be 7,000 square feet in, in area, and one would be 4,000 square feet with a drive-through. And finally, parcel C was proposed with a six-story senior housing facility with approximately 100 units. This conceptual plan served as the basis for Edwards to determine if the land use choices were appropriate during their time, they served as the village's consultant. After a year of working with village staff, holding public meetings, and meeting with different users to understand what the market would bear, a conceptual plan based on the board's vision was created. In April of 2022, Edwards presented the conceptual master development plan to the plan commission, and received a recommendation of 6 to 0 to approve the concept plan. In May 2 of 2022, the committee of the whole and the village board approved the conceptual master development plan, with the only change reducing the amount of square footage for residential development from 55% to 45% for the overall development floor area. The conceptual development plan was used as the basis for a request for proposals that was issued in May of 2022, and with responses due in June of 2022. There were two proposals that were received, one from Edwards Realty Company and the other from Flaherty and Collins. Unlike Edwards Realty proposal, Flaherty and Collins did not encompass the entire site, and Edwards Realty proposal, which is shown on the screen, went into further detail of the previous proposed concepts that included, again, mixed uses, shared streets between parcels A and B, a relocation of the park, and a civic and entertainment building at where the current Crescent Park sits. Other than that, in addition to that, I should say, parcel C was re-envisioned as a daycare center, and there was also additional office space noted for parcel E directly north of the existing parking, parking deck. In August 15 of 2022, the village board approved beginning negotiations with Edwards Realty, and in December of '22, Edwards' proposal was updated to remove all residential uses. In October of 2023, the village board approved the term sheet that would serve as the basis for the redevelopment agreement, that set forth the major business terms for the redevelopment agreement, which included the mandatory aspects of the projects, as well as the entitlement process.
Okay, so at this point, then, we were ready to go to, to start preparing for plan commission. So on July 2, 2024, there was a, the, the, the plan commission review, the plan development subdivision. So that's the master plan and the terms in which we developed. On December 19 of that year, there was, wait, I'm on the wrong slide. A minute, there you go. There you go. That plan development and subdivision had seven modifications. The first two on parcel H E were mostly because there was roads on three or four sides, I'll get into that in a second. And then the last five had to do with the parcel C because of the grade. It was pretty severe, and we had to move the building. And then the village did approve the plan development on August 5 of 2024. So I'm just going to go through the aspects. Okay, there you go. So again, here are the modifications. The parcel H, so, we should go back to this one real quick. I want you guys to emblazon this into your brain. Okay. A and B are the two parcels north of 142nd Street. Crescent Park is where Crescent Park is. Parcel C is the yellow parcel on 143rd and the train tracks. Parcel E is the north of the garage. Parcel F is just the commercial that's underneath the garage. Parcel H is the southwest corner of La Grange and 142nd. Okay, again, sorry about the formatting, the printed copy and the presentation copy are not the same. So the plan development also approved a specific entitlement process, which was, went through the public hearing process, and then was approved by the board. And basically, the purpose of this was to take some risk out of the process. So I will go through all the sections for you, and what we're basically saying is that if the little pieces of the development each phase is consistent with the plan that was approved, so inside the footprint, met the built-replant requirements, met the uses, which I'll go over shortly also, it can go directly to the village board, because it's really, they've already, the plan commission has already vetted out all of those things. So that would be the one and only phase for public review. So it's basically saying, sealing that it is compliant with what was presented to the plan commission. The second option is discretionary plan commission review. The village board may, at its discretion, remand any part, any phase back to the plan commission for review, and see if there's any variation from the plan that was approved beyond substantial compliance, or if they wanted any kind of relief, they would have to go from the village code or the land development code, they would have to go back to the plan commission for that phase. So here is the overall plan that got approved. Again, pretty similar, north of 142nd, the two taller buildings on A and B, which are two stories, and the outlot building on the corner. Daycare, again, moved back because of the grade change in the lower left, and an entertainment building in the center with an expanded Heroes Park. Also, because parcel C was supposed to go first, and there were some general things we wanted to get approved, the preliminary landscaping was approved for the pond, for Heroes Park, and for parcel C. There was a re-subdivision that had to occur to make these actual lots, and included in that was some restructuring of the roadway. So the yellow, or the green part was vacated, and the blue part was dedicated. And that's just to, to help with the traffic circulation and be able to have a, a single park without a road going through. All right, so here's A and B. So the other thing that was unique about this, go ahead, sir.
Want to, I got a couple of questions for you about the park and the parking, the access. You want to take them as you're going, or do you want to finish up a section?
We could, we could-
We can make this pretty informal, which is the-
Yeah, I mean, so I'm going to go parcel by parcel now, and you can, I guess that would be a good time.
Yeah, can you go back to the map you had just a second ago?
This one?
Uh, one more.
That one?
So this is essentially the new plan, correct?
Yes.
Which obviously differs than what's currently built, although that's different things. Just, if you could, talk us through the logic of why we think this configuration of the built environment will work better than what was previously planned. The reason I'm asking is, it obviously necessitates a lot of infrastructure work with the park.
Yes.
Just, either the petitioner or, or, or you, just, what was that logic? I just want to hear it.
From staff's perspective, we, that one iteration of the plan had the, the park north of the garage, so there wasn't that orange building between the garage and the park.
Who's ever driven a presentation, you want to mouse over the area he's talking about?
Yeah, we don't, I don't have access to the mouse, but, oh, you do.
Instead of a laser pointer, Steve, I'm assuming this will work for you. There you go, right there.
So where the, where the mouse is right now, straight up, was going to be where the park was going to be, and then where the park currently exists was going to have a building. This allows the park to be expanded and not move the park, so that's number one. Also, we'll have more buildings fronting the park, so the park is a, a better centerpiece, and it, it just presents better. It also provides an easier shape, because it's more, more linear and less, I guess the whole, the other one was five or six sides. And then if, if the developer can go on to further-
Yeah, it's also cheaper.
Yeah, it was a lot cheaper.
Okay. I ask, Ramsey, if you don't mind, just a couple of quick questions. Yeah, Ramsey, I don't know if you want to come to the microphone, just so everybody can hear you. Just make it easier for everybody. Does this get what you need for critical density of a retail development, so that you've got the cohesion, you've got the feel, and it'll, it'll work? Because it's a change, I just want to, like I said, I want to hear the logic and, and the, and the talk track.
Yeah, we thought a lot about this, and what we really tried to do here is something that is not typically done, which may really make the centerpiece of the development Heroes Park. Traditional, you know, retail development, you try and get as dense as possible, you know, probably adding more uses, more height, but, you know, we really struggled because of the parking, and then that, that would necessitate an additional parking structure, which then became kind of cost prohibitive for the development to be able to carry that and create that increment in order to justify any further TIF dollars. So what our users that, you know, we have committed and the ones that we're trying to entice to come to the site really like is, we have the, we have the parking deck at the south end, and that's going to create, you know, a very walkable area from any part of the site, whether it's the train station, the parking deck, parcel H, the entertainment district, and it really kind of pulls the whole site together. There will also be a lot of activations there, so it's- There will also be a lot of activations there, so it's not only just a, a part that is kind of stagnant, you know, we have a bandshell there, we have, you know, ability for food trucks, different kind of activations throughout the week, whether it's, you know, the markets and things like that. So it gives us a nice venue, plus it solved another one of the Village's problems, which was the ice arena, ice skating arena that we have right now, I believe that, I don't know too much about it, I just know that it's not functioning properly and needs considerable money for maintenance. So by, you know.
Just, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just to specify, when you're talking about the ice arena, you're talking about the outdoor ice rink?
Outdoor.
That's at Centennial.
At Centennial, yes, correct. So we're going to be able to create this here much more efficient in a much better area to kind of activate in the winter time. It'll be concrete in the summer and an ice skating rink in the winter, very similar to the ribbon at Maggie Daley Park downtown.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ramsey.
Very good. So parcels A and B, I guess I want to walk through what this looks like. So I want, the left side is A and that's the part with the little J thing on the top. Remember that shape because the next couple of pictures are for you to explain this, you're going to see things side by side. B is the right side, which is the right two buildings, which is going to be on one building above on both of those and then the outlot building. So these are mixed use, so this is the ground floor and then the outlot building. So parking on the outside, pass through underneath the second floor to get from the parking to the pedestrian street, which will be activated, I'm assuming, with outdoor dining and other things like that. And so that's the base floor. So here's A. Now, one, twice in this plan, we offered multiple options for a couple of sites because we wanted to give the flexibility to, depending if something came along, like this one has a two-story option, so the, on the right is actually the second floor for the picture on the left. So it's offices upstairs with restaurant, second story restaurant, which I'm assuming could have some outdoor roof dining. And then the ground floor will be commercial and retail. And this option on the second floor, second through fifth floor would be a hotel option with a lobby on the ground floor on the portico that connects the parking lot to the main pedestrian street. So either of those two are approved as long as they meet all the parking requirements and everything that are in the plan. Okay, parcel B, again, this is the, this has one option, it's a two-story option with upper story offices, again, retail and restaurant on the ground floor. And then this one also has the option.
Can you make sure to use the microphone because I'm losing some of your words?
Sorry. For some reason with me, I have to put this like halfway down my throat, but most of the time, is that better? Can everybody hear me? Okay, parcel C. So this was the building that we had to have some modifications on. Initially, we wanted it up against the corner. It wasn't working because it's, I think it was a 13-foot tropic sheen. It was, it was pretty severe from the corner down to the grade, so it wasn't going to work for circulation and everything. We had to push the building back. So a lot of the modifications have to do with parking between the street and the, and the location of certain things between the street and the building. Okay, this is the entertainment building, so this is between the park and the existing parking garage. This is F, so there is already an existing retail space. We have the windows covered up so they don't get damaged and it's sticking out from and underneath part of the parking garage. There was a condition in the original redevelopment agreement about a vertical subdivision and turns out, we found out that has already occurred. So the redevelopment, redevelopment agreement envisions Ramsey taking over this portion of the building and it's already tax subdivided for tax purposes. Okay, parcel H. So this is another one, we have two options, and so there's a restaurant option and an office option. Parking layout is exactly the same. The difference in the size of the buildings is because they have different parking requirements.
The quick, quick question. One-story medical office building, certainly would like to see more of it. Only one story? Is there greater demand than that? I know it's hard to estimate, but. I'm trying to find a maximum use of land, Ramsey, as you can imagine. Ramsey, just, sorry.
University of Chicago wanted an additional facility there, so that was kind of.
Another standalone building, just to confirm?
Yes, another standalone, one-story building. That was at the time. But we could not envision any other medical at the site because we're restricted from it. So if we don't do a deal with the University of Chicago, there are some nuances which may allow us to do, you know, smaller independent users, but these days, nobody's really independent. So if you're attached to a major health system, you're in competition with University of Chicago.
And most of them are right now, correct?
Yeah, so if we did a medical building, it would only be for the University of Chicago and it would have to be obviously what, you know, for their.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Jesse, Cindy, we can keep this informal, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Hassan, thank you so much for coming, but I just wanted to ask you if you could please describe some of the hardships you've had as a developer dealing with our, the agreement that we have with UFC. You've been limited in some scope and I think that's important to let people know that.
Yeah, and I guess let me first welcome the new board. I look forward to working with all of you and congratulations. Look forward to working with you further, Mike and Cindy. So this site has a lot of hardships. There's, it's not, you know, there's a reason why we were really the only ones that responded to the RFP the second time in its entirety. It's because it's very complicated. You have a multitude of agreements that stack upon each other with some of the deals that were already done, whether it be with 9750 or with the University of Chicago. You know, University of Chicago, you know, has an agreement with the Village, you know, for parking and maintenance and those kind of things, but they also restrict, you know, a lot of the site. They're working through some of those things right now and I'm not saying that University of Chicago is not a good partner or won't be a good partner. They just have a lot of leverage and 9750 probably is not a good partner. We, you know, we don't really need them, but they, they had control of the site, I think up until just two or three years ago, where they were able to essentially veto some of the development that came in around them. So once that was lifted, we were able to kind of move forward. The site is, also has, you know, a lot of utility relocations and things like that. This development and the roads and everything you see on the site were developed for a very specific development that never happened. So fast forward 20 years, shopping patterns have changed, people's habits have changed, what suburban downtowns look like have changed just in the past couple of years since COVID. So we're not working with a clean slate, I wish we were, but we have to fit in puzzle pieces into an already half-baked puzzle, which is fine and we're willing to do that, but just it created a lot of hardship, a lot of things in the marketplace that we couldn't do because of certain infrastructure that's already on the site. And we're doing our best to try and fill the remaining nine acres and make it the vibrant downtown that, that we all hope for.
It's also an issue of parking. One of the goals here is that there's a financial restriction of once you build garages, which I'm a big fan of garages, but if you have garages, you have to have a lot of density. That was, A, not something that we were entertaining as a possibility, so we were working within the restrictions and making sure that what we put there would also be properly parked, which is another reason why we couldn't necessarily go up on medical, especially because it's a higher parking use.
Yeah, that drove a lot of the site planning, the parking, and we had to make sure, not only in how the buildings, you know, were on the site and the heights and all those things, but it's, it's more important than that, it's the mix of uses and how they interact with each other. So we, we had to make sure we have just enough restaurants to have, you know, enough daytime, nighttime parking when the offices are closing, so, because we're using those same parking spaces. Not to mention agreements with Metro and those kind of things. So though, you know, we were able to kind of work through that, but they created significant challenges for us in the development. And then, like anything, I mean, the biggest challenge has been time. We started working, you know, back working on this in 2021 and, you know, the deals we had in place there in 2021 are no longer here. As we all know, time kills all deals. That's why we pride ourselves at Edwards Realty on being, you know, fast and nimble and being able to make deals in the marketplace. This is an anomaly for us because, you know, things that we wanted to do a year or two ago had to go through a very, very rigorous public process. And quite frankly, I would never do this if I didn't live in Orland Park and I'll never do it again, but that's just the realities that we face. So, you know, we have moved, we, we are, have users for the parcels to move forward on phase one and we're very excited to do that in short order. There's still some loose ends to clean up on parking agreements and some things with the University of Chicago, but we think we, we are in a very good spot, that we, we are able to move forward on the development. The least sexy part of utility relocations has been ready to go and then we're going to move forward developing parcel H.
Good.
Ramsey, I just wanted to say thank you. You've devoted a lot of time to this. I know you've come to, what, 12, 15 meetings on this and I thank you for taking this on and there has to be a street or a plaque in there that's Ramsey's place somewhere. So thank you.
We'll see. As long as something's built, I'm happy.
No, I appreciate that. And just for a point of clarification, Flaherty and Collins only had a restriction on housing and rental units, correct? Not anything else?
Correct. Yes.
That was a known constraint when you guys came into the project. So I'm glad you suffered through some of the challenges, but all of these things were known, everything was disclosed. So you guys have done a great job with a lot of challenging projects in the past. These were givens. So I'm glad we're here. I'm glad you persevered. Thank you for the logic. Just want to be clear about some of the antecedent conditions you walked into.
Yeah, we knew, yeah, we knew.
Good. We're aligned. Good.
I have a quick question for you. So you're saying that this parcel right here, medical office building, how does that really contribute to like a Main Street feel to put a medical building on the corner there?
It's not, it won't be a medical building.
So what?
Correct.
Oh.
You should say that. The.
The restaurant? Okay, it's a restaurant?
Yes.
So there are no restrictions then with University of Chicago?
There are parking restrictions we're working through right now.
Okay. My next question is, what are you anticipating the total square footage built of this whole complex?
I'll get to that in the presentation.
Okay.
It's right, it's about 146, 47,000.
Yeah, around 150,000 square feet.
150,000, okay.
So this was the preliminary approved Heroes Park.
Mr., the other Mr. Hassan?
I'd just like to add something, you know.
Edward, please identify yourself.
Edward Hassan of Edwards Realty Company. I'd just like to add that between Timby and Orland, we have $130 million worth of retail shopping centers. We're buried up to here in retail and residential. We have no culture whatsoever. I take it on myself to put a theater, production theater and a comedy club in the downtown Orland, whether it's on top of a restaurant, on top of a building, under a hospital, I don't care. It's going to go. I'll probably lose my shirt.
I want to tell the University of Chicago if you're going to tunnel under it.
They don't make money. Well, if we're going to gamble, we might have to. But just an addition here and it's something we need.
It, it's true and I think you'd find just about everybody on this board would agree it'd be great to kind of pull those elements in so that this has a, you know, we've all traveled enough, you go to enough downtowns, if they don't have the right blend of retail, office, business use and people.
Or the north side. I'm tired of them telling us that we have no culture on the south side. Nobody ever comes here for anything.
You and I have heard that for years. Good.
Mr. Hassan, before you walk away, I, my, theater is my passion. So when you talk about creating a cultural, a building where cultural activities can take place, would that be something that Orland Park residents could perform in and rehearse in or is it more of a?
If we have a full-time theater, we've, of course, we can proportionate this to children theater in afternoons, we could have local and sometimes, but we'd like also to bring production, big productions into, where, where people come from 30, 40 miles away. Because God knows they don't, they don't come from 30 miles to, to Orland Mall anymore. It's sad. Thank you.
So this was the preliminary plan that was approved for Heroes Park. This one is in design and we're pretty close to this picture. Okay, Chris, do you want to talk about utility relocation?
So because we have existing stormwater and sewer utilities located in the park that goes through the park and then it extends into the pond on the north side, just to give you a background that the system that we have in the downtown, it serves the need for stormwater need all the way from here, south of the village hall. All of village hall flows into it and then it flows into the pond and then it flows into the McGinnis Loop. That's what it has. And so as part of this project, because a new development is coming on top of the park, the intent was to relocate the major utilities that we have. Those are about two 48-inch stormwater sewer and stormwater and sewer connections and then we also have a couple of water mains on the east side, northeast side of that that needs to be relocated. So utility was designed by the Village under a Village contract. We hired a consultant that did the design and originally the plan was that we were going to relocate under a Village contract, but it eventually, it worked out better that the developer, Edward Realty, was going to be handling that effort. The design is complete, all of the permits that needed to be secured has been secured. It's a matter of Village giving them the go-ahead to start mobilizing and restart relocating the utilities. The next slide, I'm sorry. So this is a good picture of what you can see where the utilities are located. This laser would not work on that screen, but at the bottom left, you can see those two brown lines that are angling towards the railroad track. Those are the main 48-inch line utilities that will be relocated and you can see they're not very thick line. If I could show that at the bottom left, yep, right around there, that's the relocated line, though. The lines will be relocated into the public right-of-way, which is the roadway. That's where it will be relocated and that's it. And then at the top, you can see at the right side, those, yes, right there, those will be relocated by the Village. All other utility connections to the buildings, to the development will be provided by the developer as part of their expense. This is going to be part of eligible TIF expense that the utility will be relocated. The developer will, will go ahead and get the job done and then we'll be reimbursing them for the expenses that will be incurred.
So the redevelopment agreement, which I know you all have had the pleasure of reading, it's very, very long, very, very complicated, not complicated, but very broad in scope and that's the way that we are going to implement this plan beyond what our normal codes would. So this has got to do with financing, land uses, how money is going back, how much money. And I've had a chance to speak with some of you about this. I'm just going to highlight the stuff that's mostly related to the plan. I'm not going to get into the minutia of like insurance requirements and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
So there's $33 million, which is committed, up to $33 million in this redevelopment agreement. Of that 10 million is for two very specific purposes. So the development of Heroes Park and the relocation of utilities. The other 23 million is for TIF eligible expenses. So these are things that are set out by statute and then we limit them even further inside this agreement. So the agreement will say exactly the things that are, be able to be reimbursed and most of their public goods mostly or land preparation, I'll get into that list shortly. There's also a condition in there that as far as reimbursables, there's a lot of questions for about risk. So the request for the TIF eligible expenses cannot occur until 12 months of the final occupancy. So the use has to be, have its final occupancy permit, then they can request the money and we start the process of reimbursement. So we will already have something in the ground and potentially fillable before we start the process of asking for reimbursement. In that, there's also a condition about, I'm sorry, do you have a question? There's a small holdback on every single phase and that is just for protection in case something goes wrong and that won't be returned until at least 90% of the total square footage is completed. at least 90% of the total square footage is completed. Again, the, so there's two, actually, two funding sources here. One is the TIF increment, so that's the amount above of new property taxes that are generated from the development, and also a special sales tax that we put in place, which is just for a specific area. Those funds can be used to reimburse the requests for, for the TIF eligible expenses and the $10 million for the park and the utilities. Dennis, were you gonna ask me something? No. Okay. It also is the inclusion of a special service area. So, for those of you, for what an SSA is, is it's a special taxing district, which can be dormant or active. In this case, it's gonna be active, and that there is a budget that will be set for these 10, or these eight things, which are very specific to maintenance or things that are going on inside that geography. So, this is seasonal decorations, common signage, maintenance of the pond, maintenance of the, I think the streets are in here too. Anyway, those are the eight items. They're listed in the redevelopment agreement. And that is governed by a board of five members, and they decide what is gonna go into the next year, into the budget that come, the coming year. And then, so that can be allocated through the tax process to charge the people within that district. That they won't, they don't have the power to start doing this until there's enough money coming out of the SSA. Until that point, just like mostly what goes on in most of town, the village will cover those costs until there's enough revenue being generated from taxes to fund the SSA. The other thing which is kind of important about this is this is an open book project, which means that redevelopment agreement very specifically states that the developer and the general contractor have to have open books for auditors, and that the costs are not more than market rates, and that there is responsible bidding. So, that's another guarantee that we have in the, in the RDA. So, here's the things that are required, and I've kind of bunched these from the long list that was in the redevelopment agreement. So, the first group has to do with land use. So, this basically says you have to build at least this many square feet, which is 146,900, and you have to have a minimum of certain types of uses. So, that, it's about 37,000 of general office or medical office, 84,000 square feet of retail, a restaurant or the commercial, commercial, 26,000 square feet of entertainment. There is some tolerance in there, because we don't know what's gonna happen as time goes on. The village manager can go plus or minus 20%, but you still have to make sure that all the requirements overall are met. So, you can't go down, down, down every single one, and then you're, the top number is off. The village manager does have the discretion to bring those decisions to the village board. We also, there's some other requirements in there, that if there was another hotel or another daycare, those can be substituted with board approval. There's to be no residential. We're gonna try really hard to not have drive-throughs, no non-property taxpaying usage, because this is a TIF, so we want to make sure that it's built, it's taxable, so that we can fund the TIF. And they were gonna try to get a microbrewery into Parcel F, which was the garage space. It also guaranteed that they have to work on Hero's Park, relocate the utilities. And there's also some provisions there about the potential use of the station, and in exchange for use of that station, they would also maintain the station. And then there's a long list of developer public improvements. Again, these are listed. I'm just, I'm not gonna read through the whole list.
Okay. You don't have to read these.
Yep. Then I'm gonna pass this over to our attorney and our TIF attorney, Buzz.
I do have, oh, sorry. Any questions, John?
I will, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead now, or?
I can wait.
I have one question about the land acquisition. I just want to make sure I understand that. So, during the course of this, Edward's Realty will take down property?
Yes, one, one phase at a time.
Transfers from the village to Edward's, and that will be an eligible expense for the, some of the debt issue?
At the end, it will be, after they get the occupancy.
And how are we setting the price? Because I'm pretty sure we wrote down that loan in an audit. That was an interfund loan that bought all that land, so what's the value of the land on our books?
The, the values of the land, or what Edward's is going to pay us, is, they are an exhibit to the, to the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. I'll follow up. I just want to, I want to get some details on that question.
Okay. Questions have arisen, obviously, about how, how is the village protected in this entire process of giving up land that we own, committing $33 million of TIF increment to this project? And I have divided that into three protective periods. One is the pre-construction period. These are all within the redevelopment agreement. The closing for each parcel in a phase of development, there'll be one phase at a time. There is the possibility that if things are going well, that he can come in and get two parcels. But any time that Ramsey contemplates, at such times he contemplates making these purchases, there are things that must occur before we're willing to give up title to the land that we own. And I think you all know that, right now, all the property that is subject to this development is village property. Now, in order for title to change hands for a particular parcel, the developer has to give us a notice of closing when he's ready to close on a particular parcel. And I would stress that the redevelopment agreement contains within it a schedule to which he must adhere in terms of when each parcel will be developed. Now, before we close on a parcel and transfer deed to him, the developer must have all of his permit documents for that particular phase to the village, and to the extent that the village is ready to issue permits for that property. They, it has to have been approved. Another deposit that the developer must make into the closing escrow for each parcel is we have to have a commitment from a lender that the developer has the sufficient funds on hand and committed from the lender to develop that particular phase of development. Also, there must be deposited into that escrow, all of, there are insurance requirements for each phase of development, and we have to see in that escrow the certificates of insurance that the developer has provided, and that's for each phase of development. In addition, all of the public improvements that are involved with each phase must be bonded. In other words, the developer has to provide to the village and deposit into the escrow all of the performance bonds that are required by the RDA. That includes either a, in the form of a performance bond or a letter of credit. And in addition, there is a cash escrow of 10% of the, of the amount, the estimated amount of the public improvements for that phase. And he must also deposit into the escrow all permits that may be required from other jurisdictions before we are willing to close and before we are willing to title the property to the developer. And I, this is important, because I think, I want the board to understand that we are not going to go into any phase of development until we absolutely know that there is a commitment from a lender sufficient to complete that phase of the project. In other words, we don't want to get into the middle of a project, and the developer tells us that he has to go out and get additional funds.
Just a quick, thank you. Just a quick point of clarification, and, you know, I'm just gonna use round numbers. $100 million project, or the Edward's Realty is gonna seek $100 million worth of funding, and I'm just, we're gonna be in for 25, just making the math easy. So, what you're saying is, if I read this slide right earlier, 25 million could be used for land acquisition, but you're saying now that in order to protect the village, before this goes forward, the Edward's Realty Company has to come say, yeah, we've got the financing for the other 75 million, on my simplistic example. That's what you're saying?
I'm saying that for each phase of development, we have to know that that, there's a commitment from the lender for that phase.
And the lender is some, it's not, it's either Edward's or one of your financiers? So, it's, that's the incremental capital you're bringing to the table in addition to the village contribution? I'm just clarifying that. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Are you saying that, are they putting up a letter of credit or a performance bond?
The statute allows them to do either.
Either.
We can't, we can't absolutely demand a letter of credit over a performance bond because of Illinois statutes, but...
Really? Interesting. I just know this from personal experience. I recently, on a project head, put on a letter of credit for the full 100%. So, the question is, are they only putting up 10% of this letter, performance bond, of the cost of the utilities?
The performance bond will cover all of the public improvements within that 100%. And then, plus, they're putting up 10% cash. So, if there are any problems, any damage done to existing utilities, the, the village can use that cash to, to cure that problem.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just risk everything else that you guys own. Just put that on the table for us. Is that how that works in your business? Just, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
So, that's where we get our assurances, to the extent possible, that each phase of development will have sufficient funds to complete it, and the public improvements that are endemic to that particular phase will be bonded over.
Another quick question. First of all, I apologize. I'm just getting caught up with a lot of this stuff, so since being elected, we did not have access to a lot of these documents. So, there is a little bit of a learning curve here. But did you say whether or not the, at what stage is the park being built?
I'm sorry?
What, at what stage will the park be built, developed?
The park?
The second phase.
The second phase after AMV?
Yeah.
Okay.
What else? Anything else you want to cover?
Yes. I also wanted to, in the event that we have a closing on a particular proper, property, particular phase of development, if there is a, we have given the deed over to Edward's Realty, and they don't perform and don't break ground on that property, there's a write-off reverter to get the, we get title back to that particular property. With respect to the time when the construction is underway, and after construction, the village funding obligation will be evidenced by a note that we give, and each phase will be a portion of that $33 million. And we give that note to Edward's Realty. The lenders typically require that, so they know that the village is good for that, for our commitment on that phase of development. And that note will mature 12 months from the date that we issue the final certificate of occupancy for that phase, and then we pay the note on that phase. And as Steve described previously, for each, each of those phases, the village has a 5% holdback. And then, when Ramsey has completed 90% of the square footage, then he's entitled to the repayment of that 5%.
Okay. Anything else you wanted to finish on that?
No, that's...
I guess a question for staff. Is that the gist of the presentation? John, did you have any questions? I have a couple for...
No, I, you know, one last question. Mr. Hassan, Ramsey, what is your estimated cost of this development?
Hey, Ramsey, you got it. Call you up to the microphone. Sorry.
Sorry.
About 130 million.
130 million? And we're building 147,000 square feet? So, we're pushing close to 1,000 square foot?
Well, there's zero square footage of the park, which is, you know, 10 to 12 million.
Okay, take 10 million off that. So, 120 million? Okay. Is that, is that turnkey for all these buildings, or is that white box?
No, it's turnkey.
It's turnkey for everything? So, okay. What would be, what are you guys, how is the financial being broken down? Because the village is putting in 33 million of it. What is your firm putting in, and what is being financed?
Well, that's all, I mean, that's all in the agreement, in the pro formas we worked off of. There's very detailed pro formas, but typically, you're able to get a loan for 50 to 65% of the project, and we would have to put in the rest. And again, this is on a phased basis. So, I know everyone talks on giant numbers at once, but that's really not the case. For example, you know, the restaurant going on Parcel H is probably a $6 million endeavor, and, you know, you usually get a loan, let's say, for 4 million, and we put in a down payment of 2.
Okay. But in that down payment, how much of that is covered by the village of Orland Park and the residents? The reason why I ask is we're about to throw down $33 million of taxpayer money through a TIF, and from this RDA that I read, we get nothing in return other than a, we get a development. But what does the taxpayer really get back?
Well, they get back an amazing park. They get a developed parcel that's been sitting dormant for 25 years. You get activated the northwest corner of 143rd and Lagrange, and nobody knows better that, that corner than we do, since we turned around Orland Park Crossing and developed the southeast corner. You get office space. We have a co-working space for 20,000 square feet we signed. So, this gives some, you know, something we kind of have now, but it gives a large facility for co-working. So, if you work from home, you're, you can have an office here, whether it be one day a week, a couple days a week, access to conference rooms. You have an ice skating rink. We're activating the train station. We have more office users coming in. We're creating an entertainment district, where right now, all our restaurants are fragmented, fragmented all around town. You have the largest economic driver that's the mall right now, which does great for retail. But all of the, the entertainment that really we're talking about that needs to be here, which are high-end bars and restaurants that aren't the typical chains that only go on Lagrange Road, that's an amazing amenity that we don't have anywhere here. Not to mention, we're activating the base of the parking garage. We're taking a role in the management of that parking garage, which has had, you know, a lot of problems lately. You know, we're putting something on the tax rolls that, that not there right now. I mean, I could go on and on. The north end of the pond, that pond not only drains the site, it drains everything from Village Hall there. We're fixing that. We're activating it. We're creating more pedestrian areas. We're creating more park areas. And with the mix of uses we have, it's, it's pretty incredible how they all work together and intermingle. So, in order to do that, it has to be a public-private partnership. So, you know, being a citizen of Orland Park myself, you know, this is what, this is what someone like me and my family would want. So, I think it, it has great benefits. So I think it has great benefits. Now that it's connected to the bike path, the train station, now, you know, other people can enjoy these amenities because that's really what we want, too. People coming in from out of town to spend money in our town, pay our taxes, and leave. So it's not only a benefit to the residents. I think Orland's a regional draw. So as we think about what does this look like? And we had to think about this with Orland Park Crossing, too, when we were picking our tenant mix and turning that from 40% to 100% occupied, where you have to have the retail draw coming in, which we do have. But you also have to complement that with other things. I think if you ask a lot of your neighbors where they go to eat on a somewhat regular basis, a lot of times, it's not in Orland Park. We own one of the places a lot of people in Orland Park go to, and that's, you know, the lovely Burr Ridge Village Center. So we want to be able to create that here. And in order to do that, you have to have a commitment with the municipality to be able to set the table to lure those uses in because that vacant land sitting there for 20 years with overgrown grass and a boarded-up moldy parking garage and a water feature that is a sight for sore eyes really isn't creating anything.
No, I completely understand that, and I think it's great. But I just want to be transparent. I want the Village of Orland Park. So you said it's $110 million. 65% of it's being, you know, funded by, let's say, banks. And that leaves roughly 35, 45 million, 33 of it's coming from the village. So you're basically saying you guys are putting about 5% to 10% equity into this project?
No, that's incorrect.
It's incorrect? Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll leave it at that.
Are there any other questions on the board? I have one closing question from Ramsey.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mike.
Just for the sake of everybody having this information, can you please send us all this presentation? So we can refer to it in the future. Because this was good to have everything all together in a summary. So thank you for doing this, by the way.
Any other questions? I've got to, so Ramsey, you want to come at this from the other side of the hill? So let's say we get through all this, you guys launch, and it's successful. What would you and Edward and Edwards Realty generally expect from the Village of Orland Park to help you be successful? What can we do?
You mean moving forward to get the whole development off the ground?
Yeah. So just, we all get through all the details. What else could the village do to help?
Well, I think, you know, something like this, and I've preached it before, we really need flexibility. The one thing I know about this redevelopment agreement is that it's going to change, and that we're going to need to change it as we go on. Whether it's a use that we did not contemplate, that's amazing, and we've been trying to get for 10 years that we did not run through plan commission or contemplate coming in here. So I think not only with the flexibility, with the redevelopment agreement, to talk about what's the shared, you know, vision moving forward that we may need to amend, but also, you know, going through the process. You know, we've had a lot of public meetings about this before, and, you know, we're more than willing to have future meetings. So I think continuing the transparency, staff has been really great. So I would say, you know, kind of continuing to help finish what we've already started because we've, you know, we've been working on this since 2017 in the first, you know, RFP when we started kind of sniffing around the site. We got back involved in 2021, coming out of a pandemic. And I just think these are really great risks to take. And in order to do so, we just need the partnership with the village to be successful. That doesn't mean more money, but that could mean more flexibility, help getting through some of the processes, some of the agreements that are already in place. Just the agencies that we're dealing with right now to get this up and running is pretty incredible. You know, you have, you know, not only Village of Orland Park permit process, but you have IDOT, you have the IEPA.
Water Rec, right?
You know, I can go on and on and name a bunch of letters, and people will think that maybe they're actual agencies. So, you know, I think help with those things would be great. And that's already happened. So I think just continuing that spirit of cooperation would be amazing.
So playing it back, I heard you say cooperation, flexibility going forward because it's inevitable we're going to bump into changes, which has been the history of development, and then assistance with other agencies.
Yeah. And also help with economic development, too. You know, I think that's been, we've been able to lean on the village to help with that as well, whether recording tenants, you know, just because we're getting a lot of this TIF money for the infrastructure and things like that, we still may have to incentivize, you know, businesses that come in.
One of the blessings of being in Cook County is the need to do incentives. But.
And that's the reason why, you know, we would have loved to do a hotel or some other uses here. But, you know, being in Cook County, some of those users would just not be willing to do that. So we have to find other mechanisms to get them in, and then they prosper, then they're on the full tax rolls and all those kinds of things.
No, I appreciate that. And I guess we can have the conversation with the attorneys just to make sure that we've pre-thought how to flex the agreement as opposed to what flex we're going to ask for. So we'll take that up with the attorneys.
Okay.
If there's no other questions, let's call it a night.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Second.
Trustee Healy, Exa. Trustee Kitzany.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Sorry.
Trustee Leafplant.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye. Have a good evening.
We got you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a quick question. Just so, this has been, this is being recorded, so it's available for residents of Orland Park to watch again. With regard to the items that were posted on here, is there a way for people to get ahold of those particular, like the pictures? And, or is it just through, would it just be through the recording?
We can make this presentation available on our website.
Please do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.